The Paramount City Council is now called to order. May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Geen.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Lemmons.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Geen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. At this time, we'll have a presentation. My colleagues, please join me.
Are we going down?
We're going down?
Yes. Or do you want to sit? Do you want it? Yeah, we should. Because Red Cross is wonderful.
Okay.
A very important organization in our community. Would Tom Harkinson of the American Red Cross please come forward? The Red Cross, founded more than 137 years ago, is a volunteer-led humanitarian organization. Its mission is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by responding to everything from small home fires to massive disasters. March is American Red Cross Month, and we in Paramount celebrate the recognition every year. We have a very good relationship with the Greater Long Beach Rio Hondo South Bay Chapter of the Red Cross. They are active in the community in many life-enhancing ways. They hold blood drives at Progress Plaza. They install free smoke alarms for many residents through their home fire campaign, and they are partners in disaster preparedness. We appreciate these ongoing efforts by the Red Cross, and we urge generous support for the local chapter. So I now proclaim March 2019 as American Red Cross Month in Paramount, and thank the organization for its good work. Thank you so much. If you'd like to take a photo. At this time, we will have city council public comment updates.
No updates, Madam Mayor, but when you move into public comments, we have two.
Okay, public comments, please.
Yes, our first speaker's card comes to us from Andrea Crowe, our librarian. She wants to talk to the council about library programs. Andrea?
Mayor Martinez, councilmembers in the city of Paramount. This week, Paramount Library has an event for every age group. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March 20th at 4:00 p.m., teens are invited to frame a bite, where teens can design a picture frame inspired by technology. For children ages two to five, Smarty Pants Storytime is back this Friday, March 22nd, at 10:15. And don't forget, spring is almost here, which means gardening season. Adults can join us this Saturday, March 23rd, at 2:00 p.m. for an interactive bilingual gardening workshop, which will cover everything from soil preparation to environmentally safe pest management. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Our next public comment card, speaker's card, Madam Mayor, is from Ms. Gloria Fernandez of Century Boulevard, and she'd like to discuss with the council's safety concerns in the Holliday area. Ms. Fernandez?
Hi, good evening. I've been living, I have the fortune, the good fortune of living in Holliday for the last 20 years, and it's a beautiful, quiet neighborhood. And because of its quiet distance, we have, in the 20 years I've lived there, had to put up with, because we live right across the street from the park, weekend drinking at night, seeing the bottles there in the morning, used condoms thrown in the street, the constant racing up and down the street, the donuts, and recently, more recently, the homeless situation. And it's, the vandalism and the burglaries are on the rise in our community in Holliday. And I bring this point up because we are forgotten, we don't get patrol, and the, again, the homeless population and the vagrancy is overtaking our beautiful community, community in Holliday.
Okay, Ms. Fernandez, thank you so much for coming before the city council to state your concerns. At this time, I'd like Ms. Lopez, if you can get her contact information, and we can work with her. Thank you so much, Ms. Fernandez. Okay, item two, resolution number 19006. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. The first item is an amendment to the expense reimbursement policy for official city business. This is also known very commonly as the travel policy. As the city attorney will explain here in a few moments, it's very necessary and is also good practice to review and amend this policy from time to time, just to stay up to date with, obviously, the law and with best practices that are out there. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney, John Kavanaugh, who will present you with the item. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and members of the city councils, John stated, "This is not necessarily a new item, but more of an update," if you will, "of an existing policy that you have, which is a reimbursement policy for expenses incurred for official business." This policy was initially adopted by the city council back in 2006 as a result of AB-1234 being adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor, which basically mandated that all cities or public agencies have to have a reimbursement expense policy to show that whatever expenses that are incurred by public officials is reflected in the actual businesses, the business that you're doing for, not for a private business or private purposes. So that, the city council did comply with that in 2006. You made an amendment in 2017, which you complied with government code 1223, which allowed a vehicle allowance rather than reimbursement, and that made that easier. What we're doing today is really not adding anything new. We're basically documenting, should I say, or exhibiting a current practice that the council does, but we're memorializing it in the policy for two reasons. One, it's to enable you as city council and also for our commissions or any of the other boards that you appoint, as more of an objective guideline, so that the term "actual" and "necessary expense" is really, sometimes it's hard to interpret, but over the years, you know, through experience, we get to define those much more closely and much more objectively. And so the purpose behind this is to give more of an objective definition of what is considered to be actual and necessary. And in the proposed policy that we're presenting to you, we're amending the current one, and the language that is italicized is the proposed changes. You will see that what we have, what we actually have proposed to you is created two categories of authorized expenses and unauthorized expenses. Again, these are expenses that you are currently practicing, but what we did was that we memorialized it so that the boards, the commissions, and the council can look at these, as well as making this a transparent document for the public to see what the city will do with respect to reimburse expenses for your business as public officials. You will see that we did authorize, we did authorize, and what we did, we amended the air policy, air travel. We combined domestic and international travel into one policy. It was a little confusing to break up the two, because essentially, the requirements are the same, no matter what the, what the travel is, but what we did is, so we defined air travel, and we made it very, very clear, just like it was in the prior policy, that international travel has to be approved by the city council. But in addition to that, it's designed to give you the guidelines of what you will do when you do travel for expenses for city business. Of course, we have our current operations where things are prepaid in advance, like conferences and things like that, so a lot of times, staff will be able to do that for you. But in all these other expenses, this is designed to give you very objective guidelines, and also, again, to make the document transparent to the public. So what we're asking you to do is to approve this resolution, to amend the policy as an update, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kavanaugh?
Make a motion to approve the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Geen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Item three, homeless outreach efforts. May I have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. A little less than a year ago, we had the pleasure of hearing from the sheriff's department's resident expert on the homelessness issue. Lieutenant Jeffrey Dietrich is the lead person on the sheriff's department's homeless task force. Well, I invited him back with us again tonight to give us an update on the latest with regards to homeless issue, as this is an issue that definitely changes day by day, month by month. So with that, I'll invite Lieutenant Dietrich up to the, sorry, up to the podium to give you his presentation on homelessness.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Dietrich. I'm the lieutenant that oversees the LA County Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Services Team. Currently, our team has 10 deputies, a sergeant, and a lieutenant that are assigned to the team, and how it's broken up is each patrol division, other than yours, has two deputies assigned to it. You're special, you have three. So in the South Patrol Region, we have three deputy sheriffs, which will be increasing throughout this calendar year, to where we hope to beef up our team to some better numbers to help serve the community. However, you do have three, which is a blessing. The reason we have those deputies assigned specifically is that they have that day-to-day feel of what's going on in that, in that station's area, and you as a contract city with us, you know, through Lakewood Station, it's important to have that, because what we found in the past was information gets lost, and things change, and by nature of the homeless population being transitory, a problem today could be a completely different problem by Friday. So what we found also is, it gives each entity a point of contact, so the Lakewood Station captain and the Paramount S.A.L. Lieutenant Verigien, he knows who to call. There's no wasted time to get services and information. So that's how the team's structured. In the time that I have with you today, kind of inform you on the department's efforts, also policies and strategies that we've implemented, and then we can discuss some current events that have happened here in Paramount, where the host team has worked with your city staff and had some very successful results. And also to answer any questions that you may have, because quite often, we found that, and we're improving that, Sheriff Villanueva on day one said a return to service, and this team embodies that. And part of that returning to service is also being available to alleviate concerns and to address concerns and to answer questions, so that's a conclusion. Please feel free to ask anything that you may have. The LA County Sheriff's Department, as part of the homeless initiative, in 2016 bore the responsibility of a few of the strategies, and one of them was the first responder training, which I'll discuss at the end of the program, and then our LA County Sheriff's Policy, where we revamped the policy of the department to address homelessness while balancing public safety and also respecting the dignity of those who are homeless in the community. We also added a jail inreach policy, meaning, and to be concise, those who are incarcerated, who are listed as homeless, they're not just released out the door. There's counseling, there's outreach workers, there's case managers that try to get involved at that point to help alleviate that person from being returned to the community as homeless. This is a field operations newsletter that was adopted in 2017, which clearly outlined, and this was for the entire department, a revamping of policies, retooling it, also clarifying existing policies. That was a field ops directive, and it is part of our policy through the department for everybody working patrol. It addresses not only who is homeless, definitions, resources. We also talk about how law enforcement is not the solution to this problem, which we'll discuss later on. But it was a comprehensive, first of its kind in law enforcement at the time, to address it in the manner that it did, that was consistent with the county's homeless initiative. In doing so, we look at what is the current state of affairs. In the United States, we have over 550,000 people who are homeless, and we also have 9% were between the ages of 18 and 24. However, 71% were over the age of 24. California accounts for almost 50% of this country's unsheltered homeless population. And when you take a look at the why, anecdotal evidence tells you it's the weather. Although we've had recent rains and some inclement conditions lately, the weather here in Southern California and Northern California is conducive to someone being able to live outside. You look at the state of California, and we just had a new homeless count in January, so this is a year behind. Hopefully, the numbers go down, but we haven't seen the new numbers yet. But for 2018, we had approximately 130,000 people, 130,000 homeless people in the state of California. In Los Angeles County alone, there was 7,876. Now, these are documented families, so that number could even be higher. We also looked at the fact that California had 10,836 homeless veterans here within our state. From our LA County count, which is specific here to our geographic region, during the count, they identified 740 people who suffered from AIDS, which is a dramatic reduction, thank God, that it's gone down, not eradicated, but it has been lowering as we go, which is a benefit, or which is a tribute to those who have been combating that disease. However, we saw that our mentally ill population, people that suffer from various conditions, was 12,748, and the substance abuse admitted users were 7,117. One thing that we did see in the count, that through the homeless initiative strategies that were very focused on addressing our veteran population, that the veteran population of homeless population fell 19%, so that was a dramatic decrease among that population. So here in LA County, our veteran population was 3,886, which is 3,886 too many, but it was a reduction that I think we all would be pleased with. One of the things that we found as the sheriff's department was, I thought played, was how the media portrays the efforts, not only of the sheriff's department, but of municipalities, and how the public viewed the efforts, and what we found was that we had done a horrible job in conveying what we do. There's never a good story of a deputy taking care of someone who's homeless, providing something or getting them help. That story's never told, and that's a problem with our management and our executive staff. And the sheriff was very clear that he wants to change that. And we look at all of our policies and strategies through the lens of, how did the past work for us? It didn't. It didn't work, or we wouldn't be having this conversation. The only tools for a deputy sheriff were incarceration. It's drive away or incarceration. Those were your only two choices. So now, with the money through the homeless initiative and Measure H, there are choices, and it's important that we empower our personnel with those choices and relate with the community to what those choices are for us. So what we found was, when the host team deploys, we quite often let the media accompany us, and that way, it gives the public a chance to see what we're doing, not a story that we're telling, that someone else is telling, and I think the media usually has a different lens, but what we found is, when they go with us, the story can change. I'm not sure if this will play or not.
We can actually play it in the back, I believe. Jonathan, can you play the video?
So it's not connected. So I'll briefly describe what happened. This was about 48 hours before a significant storm here in Southern California, where that riverbed actually filled up two-thirds of the way. There was about 40 news vans up on top of that bridge who wanted to do a story, because the sheriff's department had done a press release about our team down there. In that area that we were at, prior to our efforts, there were over 200 people who were experiencing homelessness in that area, and the day that we were there, after 90 days of the host team's work, we found nine people left. It was a tribute to the deputy's work. Those nine people accepted services that day, came out of the riverbed, and so if you go back to 2015 with El Nino, where the five main waterways in LA County, we had 897 people documented living in those waterways. The host team was put in charge of that effort to make sure no one was killed or zero swift water rescues. So from 2015 to 2018, in the waterways policed by the LA County Sheriff's Department, we had zero swift water rescues, zero deaths, and zero injuries. So it was a tribute to the hard work done by the men and women of the host team and the sheriff's department stations, as well as Paramount, who actually helped us. The video was better than me talking, but we lost that. But what it was, was a very positive news story that came out to where the reporters themselves even said, "We had no idea you'd do this." Might I digress? So we look at, and I heard a lady earlier bring up, you know, the homeless issue, and obviously, it affects every community, not only here in Los Angeles County, and as we may talk about later in other counties, that have suffered massive lawsuits and massive federal involvement in how the policing is done. We in LA County Sheriff, the one thing, and I have to knock on wood, is since 2011, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has zero lawsuits, zero uses of force, zero civil claims, zero citizens arrest, addressing LA County Sheriff's efforts regarding homeless encampments, and that was the foundation for my team. We hope to not lose that, but it's just a credit to the work that's being done and how it's being done, because that's the model that's going to be used nationwide. We start with the approach, being homeless isn't a crime. You know, we've come across men and women from various backgrounds, all ethnicities, you name it, there is no, there is no standard pattern here. It's everyone has that ability. And so with that, it takes many unique circumstances and different approaches. However, there's some that can be consistent. Back in 2011, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, along with the CEO's office, the sheriff's department, when in consultation with the district attorney's office and judicial overwatch, came up with what's called the LA County Homeless Encampment Protocol. That protocol defined what a significant homeless encampment is, and it says, "When you have a location where five or more homeless people are, and they routinely gather, they've established residency, they have constructed a form of shelter or dwelling, and they have property there, that qualifies." So if you have an area in the city of Paramount where this is occurring, there's a form that's filled out, and online today, they're still trying to amend LA HOP to include this, but it's a simple document that says date, time, location, five to seven people. It's sent to the county, to the CEO's office. Once they receive it, they send it to me, my team, and then to our outreach partners. Traditionally, you have outreach that's, that's a separate entity from law enforcement, and traditionally, quite often, you'll have outreach tell you law enforcement's the problem, that they would be more successful without us. What we did was, we broke that paradigm during the El Nino efforts, so now, we actually have a LASSA host team assigned to us. They are in the police car or were in their cars, we deploy together, and there's a 10-person team that accompanies us, so the outreach is done in conjunction with our efforts. How the protocol works is one, what I just said, is identification. We then have 72 hours to go and assess the situation. When we do the assessment, it's videotaped, interviews, and everything's videotaped, photographs. We bring outreach, we bring every county entity possible with a three-letter acronym to come to have some kind of outreach assistance to those in that area. So basically, there's no condition that someone can say we couldn't address, and we have animal control also. During the assessment period, an assessment is made, and an outreach might be DMH, Department of Mental Health, might say, "If I can connect with this person, we can help them transition out of homelessness," whatever that is. During El Nino, this process took place in some places in under an hour. The longest I've seen was six months. It was an encampment that had existed up north for 12 years, and when they said, "Please, can you fix this?" We said, "Let's look at it." They gave us a year, we did it in six months, we could have done it in three. The next post is outreach. After assessment is done, there's an outreach time, based on any exigency, near railroad tracks, a waterway, a criminal trespass, might, whatever it might be, there's a period. And during outreach, the outreach people hold themselves to a high standard. Everything is documented, and that's where some municipalities have failed elsewhere, where they didn't document. They documented a police contact, but the 20 outreach contacts to that person wasn't documented. When my team handles a case like this, any homeless encampment is documented like a serial murder book. It is like a homicide case. So if we go to federal court, we can show every single document, every contact, and all the things that I've already spoken to about what we do, but it's documented professionally, and that is a big deal, and that's one of the ways we can help protect our cities also. Then you come a time where the encampment has to be resolved, there's going to be a cleanup, so it needs to be posted, and there's, there's some case law on that, but it was already involved in our process. Once it's posted, it'll say, "The city of Paramount or LA County will be conducting a cleanup operation on January 4th, 2019." The courts have ruled that simply giving someone the dignity of a heads-up that that's coming satisfies certain areas of law, and we do that every time, and we document that we did it, because quite often, the postings are pulled down or moved, and sometimes they're up, but we take care of the documentation. And then finally, you have a cleanup phase. During the cleanup phase, if there's someone still there, many municipalities get themselves into trouble, because if you throw away their property, you have a constitutional Fourth Amendment violation. You have now violated the Constitution. Just because someone's homeless doesn't mean you can throw their stuff in the trash, but nor does it mean that they can leave it there also. So in the county's policy, Public Works has a contract where the personal items that are not soiled or contaminated are collected, and they're stored for 90 days. The person experiencing homelessness is given a receipt that says the date, time, the address of the warehouse, where it could be located, and then they can pick it up between the hours of eight to five for 90 days. That also satisfies the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. Now, quite often, some people get concerned about the enormity of what a storage thing could do, and I can tell you, we store in less than half of a percent, and we've done over 1,200 homeless encampment resolutions. The last one we did involved 120 people in the encampment, we stored property for one person. And so while it seems like a big task, it does not happen very often, however, having that ability satisfies many requirements, and it makes your plan more successful. This slide was us bragging, which I already did, about not being sued, but we think that's important to, to our partners and our city partners, is that we do have strategies and policies that have been proven successful, and if you look at other entities, even in bordering counties, they probably wish they had this protocol about a year ago. One of the things, and I think it's important since we're here in Paramount, is my team is very active. One of my deputies, Deputy Ginger Mattson, wave, there you are, is here with us tonight. She is personally assigned to Paramount. I can't get her out of here. She has enormous accountability here, and when that happens, the benefits to you are immense, because you have that pride in everything that she does. Also sitting next to her is Kim Barnett, who, as I told you earlier, we have the LASSA team that's embedded with us. She was the supervisor that helped create this program with me, back to January 30th. So on January 30th, my team deployed here in Paramount. We deployed, it was with my host team and our LASSA team, and then we also had a path contingency on the other end, because the people that we came in contact with in the past had not really wanted to accept services, and through Deputy Mattson's effort and the LASSA outreach team, two people finally came around, and they accepted services. They're on their way now to transitioning out of homelessness. The old way would have been maybe make a misdemeanor arrest, take that person to jail, and then they're back out the next day. Our way is trying to make sure we connect those with services that can help them transition out, and then hopefully, that problem is solved instead of continuing and pushing it on to the next generation. Also on February 21st, we also did another outreach effort with host. It was Paramount SEOs also joined us, along with LASSA, Kingdom Causes, and HOPICs, and we also had Steve, and I'm gonna mess his last name up, Camparellis, from your city, who my deputies adore. So whoever hired him, he did a great job. And when they deploy together collaboratively is when we see these types of results. On that day, we did what's called a proactive outreach, where deputies from my team, I bring the entire team from the whole county. On that day, we did what's called a proactive outreach, where deputies from my team, I bring the entire team from the whole county here. We go out with your Paramount SAOs who have identified the hotspots where those experiencing homelessness within your community are generally located. And we bring all of our outreach components, the things that I spoke of earlier with DMH, substance abuse counselors. You name the acronym, they come, as well as LASSA teams, Kingdom Causes and HOPICs. They engaged with twenty-one people throughout that day, and they had six that accepted services. So while not perfect, it's a road to success. The one thing that happens when we do these outreach days is there is a ninety-day basically follow-up. So from the day we do the outreach through ninety days, you have these services constantly going out there to help address that problem. It's just not a one-time and done, so it's a three-month period that doesn't stop. And I think we're gonna be back here next week or so. But the outreach has other ways to benefit the station. The day that we did this, calls for service relating to homelessness from my account was down forty-two percent. We've tracked it countywide, the largest drop we saw was a seventy-five percent reduction at a patrol station on calls relating to homelessness. Because the community saw a proactive situation going on, and there weren't calls to the station requesting deputy services because they saw it happening. And so there was a benefit there. We also just found, a municipality just touched base with me last night, that after we did this for the next thirty days, they saw a forty percent decrease in crime. So that's a big deal. And so as we learn, we understand there's challenges, and there's some burdens that we're gonna have to overcome. But our goal was, can we impact this, respecting public safety and the dignity of those, and having an outcome for that population and then the community around it? Here was another thing where we did a collaborative effort here in Paramount. It was at Rosecrans in the seven-ten. This was actually a three-month, three-month outreach period, and due to the location, I believe, and then the length of time that it happened. So if there's anyone familiar with that one, the upper-left picture shows the, the encampment, and the picture's a little small, but you have a fairly large encampment with a lot of trash and debris. And as of February twenty-nineteen, the bottom picture exists where it's clean. There's no one there, there's no trash and debris, no one, there's not one citizen complaint, there is not one lawsuit, and there is not one civil claim relating to that effort. This is an example of posting. There was an entity here in Southern California that, that owns an area near the railroad tracks, and it's about a twenty-six-mile-long area. There was a specific area that ran about a mile long, where there were over a hundred and twenty people experiencing homelessness and had been there for years. There was a concern in recent times of possible criminal activity and, and the possibility of injury or death, as you see to the left of the picture. If you go over that fence, you're gonna be ran over by at least four trains that go by there. So that entity wanted to address this in a, in a way to not end up in, with massive amounts of lawsuits. Prior to us being called in, outreach had been intensively working that area for a year. We were brought in in November, and we were asked, how long would it take, and we said it would take us thirty days. They asked us to, they gave us sixty days. And remember, there were a hundred and twenty-five people. The trash was actually forty twenty-ton dumpsters. There were structures actually cemented into the concrete. It went for a long way. That's what it looked like on January seventh. For the first time in years, that area had been cleaned up. Now, as I said earlier, there were a hundred and twenty people there. Approximately thirty accepted services, meaning they transitioned out of homelessness and took shelter other places. We're still trying to follow up with some, we have almost ten who went back home to family, we have some that went to jail. Our team does not overlook criminal activity. And that's important to note that throughout all of our policies, there is actual language that says, a deputy sheriff shall make an arrest when they deem necessary. So it's, it's a balanced policy, but it does not dissuade a deputy sheriff from enforcing the law. But the majority of these people were able to understand the situation they were in, connected with outreach or they left. And so I know that that entity is very happy that their property looks that way today, it's safer for the community, and it didn't cost them a penny. Four men that we met in, in another area, and the reason I bring this up is because it comes to part of the reason why I still do this job. My background is working undercover narcotics and major crimes type stuff, but two of these men, the day I met them, were suicidal. And the picture of them on the left versus the picture on the right is telling. And, and when we found that, when we involved different things, like we had a haircutting student college who needed community service, they came and they provided haircuts. And two of the men said that they had not engaged the Department of Mental Health because they were embarrassed, because they didn't smell good. And it was a lady talking to them, and they didn't want to speak to a lady, and in such a disheveled way. The moment we got one of them a shower, shave and a haircut, connected with mental health, and today he's in his apartment. The man on the right lower, that's him going to his job, who's now an assistant manager at the barber shop in downtown LA. There he is. He had been homeless nine years, arrested multiple times. And he said that the reason that he took help was he never, he never had a positive contact with law enforcement, and he couldn't believe that we came back the second time. And so what it taught me was, and I grew up in an environment on the department where you didn't eat lunch until you had booked two felony arrests. That's just the way it was. And in this situation, showing the compassion and also upholding the law can go a long way. The encampment that these two men were in had, had been an encampment for nine years. And the city had, had come to the end of its wits. When we were brought in within ninety days, those four men helped clean it up themselves. They saved that entity fifty thousand dollars. One of the other things that I spoke about earlier is our responsibility under the homeless initiative is the LA, it's the LASD first responder training. While I'm being concise due to time here tonight, a lot of the issues that we talk about getting into the nuts and bolts of law enforcement's responsibility and what can we do? How do we get that to our, to our deputies in a meaningful manner? Because as we all know, email training doesn't quite work out the way we hoped. In two thousand sixteen. We developed, myself and Kim Barnett sitting back there, and also with a partner of ours, Rod Armelin, who's now captain now. Came up with the LASD first responder training. It was based on some criteria through Post, who does all the accreditation for law enforcement training. And as of today, actually, that number's changed, we're at two thousand deputies and sergeants have been trained in the program. What it does is it talks about understanding the homeless population, who can it be? And we found people, we found active law enforcement members in the homeless population. We have found people from all walks of life. We also talked to our deputies and staff about the stages of homelessness, transitional, episodic and chronic, and why they're important. Because if someone's transitional and they encounter your deputy for the first time, and they had an apartment last week, they are not ingrained in that community. They haven't developed survival skills. And quite often, their, their simple issue is poverty, and they're maybe down on their luck, got laid off from a job. With the new money in the homeless initiative and the people and the outreach and the strategies, if we can connect that person to somebody, they can get them right back in the apartment. Now, it's not perfect, but within the framework, it's different. We also talk about officer safety, approach and contact. As we discussed earlier, the population that we contact quite often does suffer from mental illness or have a substance abuse issue. And so we want our personnel to be highly trained, and we also go over some techniques that I can tell you, when I went through the academy and advanced officer training, didn't exist. This class is now taught in our forty-hour crisis intervention training. We teach a two-hour block within that training, it's also been added to our patrol school. So every deputy that goes to patrol gets this training, and we're now adding it to the academy. The third, the third essence is enforcement and collaboration. And what we do is we tell our deputies, you're not the solution. Law enforcement is not the solution, it should have never been, but we crossed that bridge now. What we are is that collaborative bridge. We provide a safe environment for those who are working in the outreach community, those in the mental health community, to help connect with somebody in a safe manner to help them get them off the streets. We also talk about resources, what resources are available, because they're, they're immense and they're changing daily. And as you probably know with your interaction with the initiative and the different things, I need a new page every day sometimes of what's out there. But we do make sure our deputies, because when I worked patrol, I can tell you, we had no idea, other than one church on the corner where we could take someone. And then lastly, is the legal consideration and potential liabilities. What we talk to our deputies, and we make it very clear in this training, that you shall make an arrest when a felony happens. And with, with maybe a low-level misdemeanor, drinking in public, something like that. If you could connect that person to a substance abuse person, who then takes them to a shelter and then gets them off the street. You've now kept your deputy in the field instead of spending six hours at a hospital and then four hours booking, because it gets ridiculous. And so in there, we have a vehement, or a very sturdy discussion with deputies about what they can and can't do. And we also look at the, the current case laws. Because as you know, there's, federal courts have made some recent decisions, and it's up to us to make sure that our personnel know what those decisions are to help then empower the, the people that contract with us, that, that we can protect them by doing it right our way. And so in that class, we go over that. We also talk about de-escalation techniques, which is more anchored towards the people in our population who suffer from mental illness. And, and one of the biggest things, especially with someone like me, who's deaf, I talk too loud, I can't hear. If I'm approaching someone who suffers from mental illness, and I'm not paying attention to my volume, I could take that contact and have a disastrous event just from the way I approach and my first words. So we recognize that now. I'll finish with some of the things that we also do, because what's happened now is this training has now delved into, we've taught Southern California Edison, Southern California Gas Company, vector control, animal control. I've done seven cities in the last three weeks where they brought in their code enforcement and public safety staff, and we went through the, the whole two-hour program. Which is, consists of five videos on different things, we go through those de-escalation techniques, and we talk about stuff like this. This was an area down in the riverbed where this person had fifteen HD ten-eighty P cameras to protect their narcotics business. This was, for anyone familiar with bamboo, bamboo is very sturdy and hard, I couldn't break it over my knee. However, those are two twelve-gauge, twelve-gauge shotgun slugs that were set on mousetraps with fishing line that set both of them and then came together in the middle. As I was walking through the brush to approach a tent, one of my deputies grabbed me by the back of my collar and threw me down. Had he not done that, I probably wouldn't be standing here today, because both of those shotgun shells were pointed right at the side of my hip, and they were both loaded and ready to go. The person experiencing homelessness had done this because a nearby homeless person who was stealing his recyclables, and he wanted to protect them. Then we found an eight-by-ten sheet of particle board with eight-inch nails that were covered with blood and feces, covered with dry leaves. And another department employee who came down to see what we found with the booby trap stepped on one of those nails, and it went through the bottom of his service boot, through his foot and out the top. Lesson learned, come in the same way we did. The bomb next to him created an eight-by-eight-foot crater, and all this was done over recyclables. This was a wire that went underneath the bridge because some teenage kids had ridden through an area, and that wire, when we dropped an apple, cut the apple in half. This was an underground bunker fortified with concrete in the San Gabriel River. It had been there for probably fifteen years, it had been used by a local gang to conduct nefarious activities. We heard gunshots while we were there, thinking that someone was shooting at us, but what we found out was they were hunting ducks. Last but not least, and especially in Paramount, and I'll be talking to Deputy Mattson after I conclude, is there was a municipality who had a homeless encampment underneath a bridge. And the, and the, there was five, six males, and I think there was two to three females. And it was cold outside, and they had built a bonfire, and it was made out of pallets, it was about six to eight pallets high. And we got a call, and we were, happened to be in the area, someone knew we were in the area, so they asked us, will you go talk to these people and look at the situation? When we got there, I looked up and saw this yellow tube above my head, and I wondered what that was. But what we found was, this bonfire was approximately three feet below the gas supply line to the natural gas for an entire city. Had there been a pinhole in that, in that pipe, an entire city's homes could have blown off their foundations. So we take them very serious underneath any type of bridge or structure, and in this situation, where a concrete wall was bored out, there were ten people underneath this. If we had an earthquake situation, everyone would have been killed. Our homeless encampment protocol in this situation lasts one hour from beginning to end. No one's going to be allowed to stay there. And so there are some, and I was trying to go quickly, there are policies and procedures in place that have proven to work. Sometimes it gets frustrating, and sometimes very success stories happen. But those are the, the strategies that we currently have, I hopefully, hopefully I've addressed them in a concise manner, but if you have any questions, thank you.
Are there any questions for Lieutenant Dietrich?
I, I have a, a couple of things I want to address. You talked about how it can become really emotional, both for like the side of the people who are homeless, and also the other side of it where somebody could be experiencing, like Gloria, who has lived in an area that she feels like doesn't get all the attention from the city. So you, when you feel like an area is neglected, it kind of leads to first, sometimes landscaping issues, it's all about quality of life.
Yes.
Landscaping issues that then turns to graffiti, that then turns to windows being busted out, and then you got transients and you got homelessness. And I started out with saying that it's an emotional issue because my family was established here since the early nineteen thirties, and in a little residential area and located near a lot of industry. At Jefferson and Illinois, in a little tiny house that became a store. Thirteen children were born and raised by my grandparents, and family members became doctors, nurses, lawyers. Good people. Now this establishment, we had to sell it because it couldn't be zoned because of parking issues, and they only wanted metal in this area that there's still residents. But I'm telling you that it's emotional because for a month now, the windows have been broken out. People, we had to sell the property. Don't know who owns it, they took off. The shrubs went to shit. The graffiti started, now I said the windows, and now we have people living inside. And it's emotional to see that where my family started since the nineteen twenties, one of the first Hispanic, Mexican-American families to have a business there. That it has gotten to the point where we have squatters in there, and even though we don't own it, there's still a lot of emotional ties. And so whatever you can do to focus on maybe that area that I believe gets neglected in that area, not just that location, but underserved west of the railroad tracks from Somerset to Alondra, from Garfield and Vermont, that little quadrant, it's awful. And when you look at the quality of life, and now homeless people are coming in, and I understand it's a a touchy situation, an emotional situation on both ends, but for this to have happened, it's really sad. And if you could take a look at that, I would really appreciate it.
Well, and I hear you, and, and make no mistake, tho, that's a criminal act. Breaking into there and being in there, that is not okay.
But we started making the complaints when we noticed it was being neglected, I still have, even though we didn't own it, family members were going to take care of the landscaping. Because I know, coming from law enforcement, that that's one of the first things, first it starts with the landscaping, then it starts with the graffiti, then they start noticing, hey, nobody's living here.
Right. And I hear you loud and clear, and, and I'll talk with the, your Paramount staff, because we do have additional strategies that I didn't want to go over my time today. That when we have letters of agency where we can enforce trespasses, even with the owner not being present, by upfront loading that behavior, and we can work with your code enforcement staff. I also oversee the county abatement team, which abates nuisance properties where the property owners are not engaged in keeping their property safe. And we also teach a class, policing through environmental design. We saved an entity over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they were going to spend to try to prevent a certain area where homeless encampments were prone to be. So instead of spending two hundred and fifty thousand, they listened to me and my team, and they spent twelve hundred dollars, took down a fence, added some coral gravel, some plants. some plants, and this water system. And so, there are different ways that we can address it, and I'll talk with your Paramount staff and make sure they get back to you.
Thanks. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant Dietrich. I'm very impressed with all the service that you are providing for our homeless. So, there is hope for our homeless people, so I thank you so much. And you also stated in your presentation, you mentioned Captain Armerlin.
Yes.
Telm Dian Martinez said hello. He was our lieutenant for years. And we just loved him, so I'm so proud to hear that he's captain.
No, it's really good for him, and he was vested in this. And with this program, we collaborate more here than in a lot of places. So, you should be proud of the people that work here. And it's not a free pass also. We heard, so from what the lady spoke about that neighborhood, while I don't know it specifically now, I can guarantee you that my deputy will be working on this tonight, trying to find out. So, it's not just a free pass, but we're trying to address it in ways that can fix it, instead of moving it to the next place and then coming back, because what's happened in the past didn't work. And so, if we can find a solution, which will make their community safer and address that, that's the goal.
Great. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Okay, item number... Item number four, a word of contract. Staff report, please.
It's Madam Mayor and Council. In addition to law enforcement services and paving streets and different things like that, another important job we do is to provide facilities to our community that are adequate to their needs. Our gym building in Paramount Park is pretty well-maintained. However, the restrooms are in need of an upgrade. This, the City Council approved funds on this year's budget to do this type of project. So, here's our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, to tell us more about the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the Paramount Park Gymnasium is a highly-used facility. As you know, it hosts a variety of events and activities throughout the year. The restrooms, which include the locker rooms, have not had any renovation work since... They're basically in their original condition. The proposed remodel will allow for additional stalls in the creation of a much-needed storage room for staff, and also making sure that they comply with ADA requirements. The restroom renovation project consists of the complete demolition of the existing men's and women's restroom and locker rooms. The project will include the installation of new flooring and wall tiles, new lighting, replacement of all plumbing fixtures, new self-flushing commodes, new sinks, and a new mop sink area in the proposed storage room. Three bits were received with the apparent low bits submitted by M.D. Plumbing in the amount of $153,640. The budgeted amount is $120,000. The difference of $33,640 will be adjusted at final budget using capital improvement reserve funds. If approved tonight, construction will begin in early May and may run through June. There is the possibility that the city's summer day camp program will be in session before this project is completed. And if that is the case, we will provide portable restrooms within a fenced area and make them available only to day camp program participants. I wanted to show you a couple of pictures of what we have done already at the community center. And it won't look exactly the same, but it's just to give you an idea of what the remodel will entail. So, it would go from this... Oops, I went too far. It will go up.
Very nice.
I guess you have to look at it really fast, from this to the next. Yes. So, at this time, it is recommended that the City Council approve the plans and specs, award the contract for construction of the Paramount Park Gymnasium restroom remodel to M.D. Plumbing in the amount of $153,640, and authorize the mayor or her designate to execute the agreement. And that concludes my report, but I'll be available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Make motion to approve the item. Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item five, a general plan annual report calendar year 2018. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. State law requires us to provide an annual report for our general plan. It's basically a comprehensive overview of each section that's contained in our general plan, and how we did with the various goals and objectives that were laid out in there. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chun, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As John mentioned, before you tonight is our annual progress report on the city's general plan. As you know, all cities in California are required to have a general plan to be used as a comprehensive, long-range planning document looking out ten to twenty years into the future. This annual reporting that we're doing tonight is required by state law to apprise the City Council of the city's ongoing progress in implementing various general plan elements. So, again, this item is intended as a progress report, and no changes to the general plan are being proposed at this time. And as I mentioned last year, staff is contemplating a full general plan update within the next two-to-three-year timeframe. As you know, this is an enormous undertaking, requiring multiple years to complete. We're looking for grant funding at this time to help with this process, and we'll report back to you when we're able to secure that funding and when we're able to come up with a schedule. As you know, our general plan includes the planning vision, goals, and objectives for the city that are contained within seven different sections known as the general plan elements. And these elements include what you see: land use, economic development, housing, transportation, circulation, public facilities, health and safety, and resource management. Some of the general plan element implementation highlights from 2018 are shown here and include the adoption of amendments to the zoning code allowing for an emergency shelter, accessory dwelling units, and transitional housing, and sweeping changes to our manufacturing regulations and allowable uses in the M1 and M2 zones. Installation of additional gateway and wayfinding signs at various locations within the city. Continued design progress with our bike trail extension to the LA River. Staff is also working on the Clearwater East specific plan area as related to the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Station Area Plan, and planning for a transit-oriented development opportunity, which is anticipated to include about 1,000 new housing units, retail, and open space features. And also, our continued work with the LA River revitalization efforts, ongoing economic development work to retain existing and attract new businesses to Paramount, and our ever-growing list of community events for the benefit of our residents. So, with that, it's recommended that you receive and file this annual report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Make motion to receive and file.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item number six. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may. From time to time, we do take a look at our software use overall and see if there's any room for improvement. Computer software, as you may know, is always changing and evolving and becoming better and better. Our needs to continue serving the community at the highest level also change. So, we have to try and balance the needs of our community with the ever-changing intellectual property out there. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Chun, our Assistant City Manager, to tell us about a new software purchase that will help us. Kevin?
Yes, thanks again, John. Madam Mayor and City Council members, with your approval tonight, staff is looking to purchase a new software system through a company called iWork for use by multiple city departments. The software will be used for storing and accessing planning and building and safety-related property data, and also has the potential to be used for public safety department applications. Currently, the city uses a software system that was originally intended to be used the same way, but as it turned out, it's only used by one department. In addition to being more useful, the new software will be less expensive over the long term and will also result in less maintenance costs for the city's computer hardware infrastructure. We're seeking your approval tonight so that preliminary work required to bring the software online can begin immediately. However, iWork is, they have agreed to defer billing to the city until the next fiscal year, which starts in July. So, with that, we ask for your approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do. Is this a reputable company that other cities have used before? Because I don't want to get into another issue like with our comp study, that it's been over two years. This company keeps turning over the comp study, and it doesn't get completed. What kind of research was done before going with this company?
Yes, Councilmember Guillen, this has actually been a process that began more than three years ago. We've been looking at various companies out there that provide this type of service, and we've had them come in to give us presentations. We've given our departments an opportunity to test those systems, and in many, many cases, the software just didn't work for us, or it was too expensive. In this case, we tested it in multiple departments. It worked to our satisfaction, and it came at a good cost. And so, based on that, that's how we elected to bring this to your, for your consideration.
Yeah, I guess I just kind of want the confidence, knowing that we're not going to go ahead and just pick up some company that is going to leave us hanging, you know, for two years or so. That's all. No other questions.
Move the item, then. Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any comments or committee reports from councilmembers?
I have something. Go ahead, Tom. Okay, real quick. I went to a commission meeting last week that spoke about some of the updates in the city with regard to metro lines. And then, I was approached with the question that if we changed, rezoned the swap meet parking lot to have housing, is the swap meet still going to be there? So, that's a question I'm posing for somebody else. When they rezone for the houses that they're talking about developing at some point, will the swap meet then no longer exist, or will it?
Kevin, we...
Sure. That would be the plan. That area where the swap meet currently exists would be the prime area for the redevelopment, which would be a mixture of uses, including the housing, as well as some retail and open space. So, that would be the primary. The swap meet would no longer be in operation.
Okay, I think then when we have these discussions about that, that that needs to be made clear, because we want to be transparent, so that if anybody has concerns about that, you know, we need to let them know with all this development, that's something that will no longer exist. Because I didn't even realize that myself.
Yeah, when we, we will obviously bring that to light when the item comes before the council, which will be, Kevin, I'm looking at you, April, May, around when the council will receive that, yeah, item. So, and again, it would zone it to allow the developer, the property owner, to build it if he chooses. It's just saying, you can build housing here to take it over. Now, whether or not, in the future, if he chooses to put homes there, that's his choice. So, but it just allows a location in Paramount for it to go.
Councilmember, pardon me, Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes, I was at the high school, I'm from Hoffmeyer also, on Saturday for the student forum, which can get pretty interesting a lot of times, and anyone who's ever been there before, you kind of lead discussions in the, sponsored by the Rotary Club Paramount. And they're awarded actually cash prizes and different gift cards, so on and so forth, for the kids that participate in these different conversations. And they're pretty involved questions that we have to try to monitor. I was a monitor, and then there's a judge that judges at my table, and there's five groups that come through during the morning. And mine was really interesting in that they had a discussion concerning socialism versus capitalism. So, I had a lot of interesting things that were said during that whole conversation.
What's your opinion on that, Tom?
Want me to get into that right now?
I just got one thing to say, too. I was there with Tom, and discussions were very good. A lot of different topics and stuff like that. And, you know, I think we'd be very proud of the young people we have in our community, because they are very, very sharp, and they have a great future, and hopefully, they all want to stay living in Paramount.
And last Monday, I attended the civic night for the Elks Lodge, and I just applaud the Elks members for continuing this tradition to recognize law enforcement, and commissioners, and elected officials, and our firefighters. And our Citizen of the Year was our school board member, Linda Garcia. So, it was a wonderful evening, so please tell your Elks friends they thank you so much for continuing that tradition. So, at this time, I adjourned...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Comments from staff? If we can just indulge just for another three to four minutes. We do want to show you a few social media videos. I know we haven't brought those to you in quite some time, but they always are available online at our website, and also at our YouTube channel. So, they're very short videos. We're going to show about four of them. With that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan. Roll the player. Jonathan, go ahead and pause it until we get the... Oh, you can look behind you, I guess. Oh, there we go.
The city of Paramount's transit system is moving in a new and better direction. All current forms of city-provided transit excluding the medical taxi program will end on February 9. This includes the city's Easy Rider, Dial-a-Ride, College Brown, and Elderly Nutrition buses. All replacement forms of transit will begin on February 10. For instance, the Easy Rider fixed route buses will be replaced by an expansion of Long Beach Transit bus routes that currently run through Paramount. All of these changes will greatly improve service for residents and expand local and regional accessibility. College Brown, which took students to Long Beach City College and Sarito's College, will stop. In its place will be the Paramount University Pass, or PUP. This free card will provide students with unlimited travel to Long Beach Transit and Metro Bus routes to an expanded number of campuses.
It never fails.
Oh, I'll just sit right. Cute.
I am here with Mindy, one of the owners of Panaderia Texas Gold. How did you guys come up with the idea of Panaderia?
One of my friends came tonight, so we kind of, they came, we don't know what to do, and they're ripping the ass. So, we came with the, thinking with the idea of opening a business. And we got the opportunity, so, you know, we're going in now.
Where do you guys see this Panaderia in the future?
Um, right now, we're looking to open a few more stores, you know, just, you know, expand our community.
You're going to have a few of them popping up here and there? You said the original one was in Paramount. And then, what makes your guys' products special?
Everything's made in Mexico, so we're bringing a lot to you from Mexico, so some of our residents.
Nice, all right. It's going to be a nice little homemade meal you guys get. Then, what are the hours of operation?
Um, it's open from six to nine p.m.
Okay, is it every day, Monday through Sunday?
Every day, Monday through Sunday.
Oh, nice. Okay, so, Monday through Sunday. You guys better come here for some menudo, for some tamales, because I see they have them on the weekend. Just come on down and check it out.
Very nice.
And that was last video.
Thank you, John. Okay, so at this time, I adjourn this meeting until April 2nd, 2019.